On the agenda are actions related to the purchase and sale of the Brandenburg and Sobrato North Coyote properties. I know that many of us were just outside on the City Hall Plaza doing some celebrating, perhaps anticipatory celebrating prematurely, since we have not yet actually had a council vote on this. But life is short, and it's a lot more interesting to celebrate the touchdowns before you get to the end zone. There were two people that I thanked who were not present then but are present now, and I just want to make sure they're fully acknowledged. First, I really want to thank Diane Brandenburg. And certainly, the Brandenburg family name is synonymous with philanthropy in this valley. We are appreciative of your commitment and your son Eric's commitment, and obviously, Bill's hard work in making this transaction possible so that we could preserve Coyote Valley. So, thank you so much, Diane. And I also want to thank Danielle Caneely. Rick just showed me the very tall stack of documents that resembles this agreement. And it is daunting in size, and obviously, it took somebody to actually prepare and understand every word in it. And thank you very much, Danielle, for all your work. All right, so am I giving it to Nancy?
Yeah, we have a presentation.
Okay. Well, I think many of you know Nancy and her team have worked very, very hard in collaboration with Andrea and Walter in getting us to this point. Thank you, Nancy, for all your great work.
Mayor, thank you very much. Mayor and council, good afternoon. Nancy Klein, Assistant Director of the Office of Economic Development and the Director of Real Estate. Today, I'm very happy to be joined by our partners that are bringing this effort to fruition. Andrea McKenzie, who's General Manager of the Open Space Authority, OSA; Matt Freeman, who's the Assistant General Manager, OSA; Walter Moore, President of the Peninsula Open Space Trust; Post; Kevin Ice, Senior Project Manager, Coyote Valley. I want to especially acknowledge the property owners for their key roles for a long time on many actions. This one very much included Diane Brandenburg, Bill Barron, their able representative; Tim Steele and Chase Lyman, who aren't with us, but certainly, the Sobrato organization is a big part of San Jose. Many thanks to Bill White and Tamara Galantir, Attorneys for Post, OSA's legal team headed up by Bill Parkins. And it's with a lot of gratitude and appreciation that I extend a thank you to the skilled city team who worked on this project. First among them is Danielle Caneely. So much of this transaction has had significant and legal complexities. Danielle was invaluable and critical in forging a path forward. Thanks too to our outside counsel, Bruce Galloway. Other key staff: Jeff Provenzano from EST; Jeff Blair, EST; Mike O'Connell, Public Works; Rick Scott, DOT; Jared Hart, Planning; Reagan Henninger, Housing; Nap Fakuta, EST. And what we wanted to do was begin by delighting everyone just a little bit with images from Coyote Valley. It's worth a moment's reflection, just to look at the beauty that is just 15 minutes south of us. And thanks to Measure T and all who had hand and heart in preparing and getting past the goal line. Measure T, which facilitated the funds. It was passed on November 6, 2018, with over 70% of the voters approving the measure. It authorized $650 million in general obligation bonds. 50 million of them are allocated for environmental protection, including the acquisition of land and construction of improvements associated with water quality and flood protection. Here is a summary, a very high-level summary, of the proposed financial transaction. There's a contribution totaling approximately $46 million, which the city will include. And the dollars coming from Post OSA will contribute almost $50 million. And that's just a down payment, as mentioned earlier today. Post OSA and many others will be working to infuse additional substantial funds for further conservation efforts. This slide will be shared with you, and there's a lot of tricky parts. So if you'll bear with me, I'll tell you the punchline at the end. Of the property holdings, when all is said and done, the city will own the Brandenburg East properties, which includes the Wayhe property and Fisher Flats, and will be approximately 396 acres of developable land. And on the west side, the Magenta lands will be in the holdings of Post and ultimately, OSA. That technically, the bulk of those properties aren't undevelopable, but key for infrastructure and conservation efforts. What I want to do is just briefly walk you through the actions. The Brandenburg property, which includes the blue and this portion of the Magenta, is going to be purchased by the city. San Jose will contribute roughly $32.4 million. Post OSA will contribute roughly $4.6 million. I'll tell you a little bit later in the presentation about a credit from the Brandenburg family for demolition and relocation costs associated with three residential structures on the property. The city will retain approximately 296 acres of this before we add in, of the Brandenburg property, before we add back in these other two, Wayhe and Fisher Flats. On the Wayhe option, technically, the Brandenburgs hold the option to this Wayhe property. Post will purchase the option at the same time that we close on Brandenburg East and Sobrato North. Post will then work with the city to do our due diligence on this property. And we will be back to council to accept the property if it's appropriate. Post will retain 1.6 of the roughly 16 acres of Wayhe, again, for green infrastructure purposes. As noted above, Fisher Flats is currently owned by Post and will come to the city so that, again, the city will have the ownership between Santa Teresa and Monterey Highway. The ownership of the undevelopable lands and those properties west of Brandenburg and west of Santa Teresa, it's advantageous to have them in the hands of Post and OSA as they will then be better able to apply for state, federal, and other funds for future conservation efforts. In the end, as promised, city will own that which is in the blue, and Post OSA will own that which is in Magenta. The key documents in the transaction are the purchase and sale with the Brandenburg family, purchase and sale agreement with the Sobrato property, that's for Sobrato North particularly, for us, a master transfer agreement, a conservation easement, an interim maintenance and operations plan, and we'll tell you a little bit about dissolving the community facilities districts that we have in the area. In the Brandenburg purchase and sale, the city is purchasing the property as is. To us, that means that city will assume the liability for the property as of the date of close. The seller retains certain obligations should there be found on the property, particularly that which has traversed off the property. In addition, the agreement requires that city staff provide a 1033 letter at closing, which, subject to applicable federal law, may give the Brandenburg family more time to invest the sale proceeds and defer payment of the taxes on capital gains. And demolition, relocation and demolition. As mentioned, there are three residential structures on the Brandenburg property. Two of those structures were vacated in August. One other had been vacant for quite a bit longer. In working with a relocation specialist, each one of the families that were in those two homes will be paid $124,400, for a total of $248,800. In addition, the homes best would be determined to be demolished, and the cost for demolition is $150,000. So as mentioned previously, the city will get a credit in the amount of $398,800 against the credit of the price. The Sobrato purchase, the Sobrato North, the city will own for about a minute. It's about 100 acres. Post will contribute all of the funds for the Sobrato North purchase, and it will be transferred to Post. The agreement also requires a 1033 letter, as described for the Brandenburg property. The clauses or provisions for indemnification and hazmat are the same as those in the Brandenburg There are actions related to the community facilities districts in North Coyote Valley. CFD #9 and CFD 5A were formed to facilitate development in North Coyote. In order to complete the purchase and sale of the Brandenburg and Sobrato North properties, both the CFD #9 and CFD 5A must be dissolved in order to ensure there is no prohibition from transfer on title. The master transfer agreement is basically a summary, a recitation of the overall transfers and actions between the parties. It outlines not only the transfers and payments, but the timing as described in the memorandum and in the documents. The agreement also provides that Post and OSA will indemnify the city for any existing hazardous material for Brandenburg West or Sobrato North, as the city will transfer those properties to Post OSA. And the city will retain liability for Brandenburg East and Fisher Flats, which will include Wayhe if we accept the property. On the conservation easement, it applies to all land acquired and retained by the city in perpetuity, a very long time. Wayhe, should the city accept the property, will also be subject to the conservation easement. The conservation easement protects, conserves, and the conservation values include water resources, wildlife habitat, connectivity, environmental education, agricultural, cultural resources, as well as passive recreation. The conservation easement prohibits development and preserves open space on the land for flood control and conservation purposes. Water rights were a particular issue in the agreement, and the conservation easement permits the city the continued operation of the three existing wells and related infrastructure of San Jose Muni Water System. It permits the system to be leased or sold, subject to conservation easement restrictions. The existing wells can be replaced on the conservation property, but require that the reasonable approval of OSA be achieved. And there will be an analysis of groundwater sustainability. Replacement wells must be sited at least 500 feet from the existing wells. As such, it may be that the city may need to find replacement well sites on other properties in the future. Easement restrictions prohibit expansion of water service outside the existing service area, except for water emergencies, including fire suppression and water conservation measures for drinking water in extreme instances. The interim management and operations plan, the IMOP, as we lovingly call it, requires the city to demolish the existing homes, as mentioned. It also requires that the city support ongoingly removal of illegal dumping and assistance with resolution of any potential encampments. And finally, that a final or ultimate management and operations plan will be led by OSA and approved by city council Post and OSA. It's anticipated that that will occur in two to three years. In order to facilitate the transfer, the city is requesting the vacation of Arroyo de Fuego Court, and this is necessary as it's on Bailey Avenue and part of the city's acquisition and subsequent transfer of the portions of Brandenburg West to be conveyed to Post OSA. As noted in the memo, the North Coyote is currently planned for 35,000 jobs, and in the course of GP 2044 year review, the task force will explore reallocation of some or all of the previously planned job growth in Coyote Valley. The next steps anticipate that we will close escrow on the properties, Brandenburg and Sobrato North, by November 26, 2019. The Wayhe property will transfer before February and will come back to council if that is to take place. OSA will lead the permanent master plan, and the city, Post, and OSA will initiate water evaluation and its efforts. And one more. Boy, we gotta have great lighting, because that's a stunning picture of the namesake of Coyote Valley. And then, just to leave you with one last image of your San Jose. This is from Coyote, one of the undercrossings for safe animal connectivity.
That's the money shot.
That's the money shot. With that, Andrea, I believe, has a few words to say, and then Walter.
Okay. Just, Andrea, thank you for all your leadership. I'd just say, I think you've got the council already on board after that last shot, but thank you.
Maybe I shouldn't say anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Nancy. It would not be overstating it to say that the proposed acquisition and preservation project before you of almost 1,000 acres of land in the North Coyote Valley is one of the most complex and consequential conservation projects of our time, for the myriad benefits that are so well-described in the staff report and the mayor and council member memo. We have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to protect and preserve one of the Bay Area's most significant natural landscapes, to benefit nature and people, and to be a model for other municipalities in the state and nation to follow, using nature-based solutions to build resilience to a changing climate. I'd like to acknowledge the leadership of Mayor Licardo, Councilmember Jimenez, the additional council members that signed the November 1st memo, Councilmembers Peralas, Jones, Foley, and really, the entire city council for understanding both the opportunity these willing seller transactions presented, and for placing Measure T before the voters to help fund their acquisition. The Open Space Authority greatly appreciates the collaboration and professionalism that was brought to bear on this challenging project, including city staff, council members' staff, and the landowners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea.
Walter Moore, President of Post Peninsula Open Space Trust. We simply would not be here today if we're not for the efforts of so many people. In particular, we'd like to recognize and like to echo some of the statements made already about the key players on the city staff. We so appreciated Danielle Caneely's tireless dedication to detail and willingness to tackle the tough issues, and there were many involved in this deal. I'd also like to recognize the great assistance and dedication of Kim Wallish and the entire team from the Office of Economic Development. Their focused and continued engagement, mainly in the form and personage of Nancy Klein, made this transaction happen. Nancy consistently put in long hours, working late into the night, texting our main project person, Kevin Ice, behind us, behind me, and her commitment helped us to complete one of the most complicated transactions Post has ever been involved. We are thrilled to have been able to balance the needs of the city, the people, and the natural lands. We at Post are grateful to both our public and private partners, as well as to the greater San Jose community, for coming together to make San Jose a national model for future-looking, science-based, and collaborative conservation investment. Thank you.
With that, and I mentioned that it was Tanya Diamond's pictures of kittens. We, staff is here for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll go to the members of the community who I know would like to speak. I just do want to reiterate my thanks, Nancy, to everything that you and Danielle and the entire team have done. Each one of those issues that popped up on a screen represented many hundreds of late-night hours as we grappled with very complex issues. And I know, you know, everything from infrastructure financing districts that were decades old that had to be unwound. You know, this was a nightmare, I know, for anyone looking for legal issues and financial issues. And obviously, it just took everybody committed to pushing forward to get through this, the water rights, all those things. And just, again, grateful that the folks stayed at the negotiating table and continue to work through all these challenges. I still want to just thank Scott Green and McKenzie Mossing on my team, who have been working very hard on this issue as well. Okay, I'd like to ask members of the community to come down in order to call your names. Everyone has two minutes to speak. Roland, followed by Ken Sasso, Bill Barron, Brian Schmidt, and Bill Rankin. And maybe, Bill, could I just ask, Roland, if you might just allow Bill to come down for a moment? He represents the property owners here, just to be able to... Thank you very much, Roland. I'll call you right down in a moment.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Bill Barron, senior partner at Brandenburg Properties, and you introduced earlier Diane Brandenburg, joined me today. Diane and her late husband Lee met at San Jose State, married in 1952, built a family, built a business, while spending their 66 years together as earnest cheerleaders for San Jose, as did their late son Eric. Diane and her family continue to be very active, supporters of our community, and will for decades to come. We acquired our land in North Coyote Valley, as did the Sobratos, with every intention to implement the vision identified in the four preceding general plans, jobs, all in a thoughtful and balanced way. Today, however, the Brandenburg family, as the Sobratos, together with them, stand before you as collaborative partners in a historic, once-in-a-lifetime preservation opportunity. What's before you this afternoon is the culmination of literally years of focused energy, time, and resources on the part of many. Each of the partners' actions were absolutely essential, leading up to this very moment in time. Mayor Licardo, Councilmember Jimenez, the entire city council for the vision of Measure T, the voters of San Jose who embraced Measure T, the Post Board of Directors, its thoughtful and can-do leader, Walter Moore, Kevin Ice, and their team, the OSA Board of Directors, its dynamic, underscored, general manager Andrea McKenzie, Matt Freeman, and Linda Quong, city staff, in particular, Dave Sykes, Kim Wallish, Danielle Caneely, and Nancy Klein, who did a remarkable job of juggling all of us together, and a name not mentioned, Tom Borden, who should be. The Valley Water Board of Directors and its CEO, Norma Camacho, and her team, Santa Clara County, Assembly Member Ash Colra, and State Senator Jim Bell, the several attorneys, who you referred to in the paperwork, who have ably served their respective clients well, the environmental community that have been waiting so long, and of course, the landowners. We at Brandenburg and Sobrato believe when thoughtful purpose is paired with respectful and intelligent interaction, good people can accomplish great things. We're pleased to be in the very good company of the many partners assembled today. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And thank you for those hours that you and Eric Brandenburg, the late Eric Brandenburg, invested in our office and at the negotiating table. Very grateful. Welcome, Roland.
Thank you. And I'm absolutely 100% in support of the resolution from you today. Actually, the money shot, I enjoy in front of my house every night. That's why I live down there. And I'm pretty sure that picture of the bobcat with the green background, I drew that picture myself 15 years ago, but I'll have to go home and check. But as you all know, we have to be responsible with what we do with land use. And what I want to talk to you about is one of the two parcels in the Fisher Flats, specifically the one up there that has got site on it. It's 14.5 acres. I found this parcel in 2011 to find a solution to Simoff, and it was for sale, and the price at the time was actually 1.8 million, not nearly 2. And if you look at that parcel, it's immediately adjacent to the Caltrain tracks. That's where I found it. It was a relocation for Simoff, right on the other side of the track that's owned by Union Pacific. They're about to put a massive rail yard down there that's going to go all the way from Metcalf and nearly all the way down to Bailey. It was an ideal site. And now, we're about to put the conversation easement, and people are going to tell me, "Well, why can't you move Simoff to Capital Expressway?" It's very simple. You take a train down to Blossom Hill, you're going to send it back to Capital Expressway empty, from Capital Expressway down to Blossom Hill and empty, and eventually, you'll go back this way. You have to turn the train around three times instead of once. The cost in operations to Caltrain, I've calculated, is $2 million a year. That's just for 20 trains a day, five days a week. So, what are our options? Well, obviously, we can't. I mean, in the domain of Union Pacific, people have tried. That's not going to go anywhere. But the parcel immediately north of that belongs to PG&E, is part of the Metcalf Energy Center. Now, if you want to go around spending maybe $5 billion buying PG&E instead of a couple million dollars here, go ahead. But as I recall it, Measure T included money for infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ken Sasso. After Ken is Brian Schmidt and Bill Rankin.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Sasso. I was born in San Jose, lived in the Coyote Valley for 75 years. Today, I represent six generations that have lived or are living in the valley. Our property has been annexed to the city of San Jose since 1959. That's 60 years, and it's zoned for residential use. So we just didn't move in. We've been here for a long time. We continue to pay our dues to the city. Today, my thoughts are focused on how the city will treat people like ourselves, our landowners, that have been annexed and zoned for so long. So what we're really looking for today is the equity and the justice, both morally and legally, on how you treat people like us, for people that are annexed and zoned, especially along Monterey Road on the east side. So before you remove jobs and housing, which I think everybody needs in the Coyote Valley, I think you need to deal with people like us before you try to abort us. Because that's, I know, this is not my first rodeo. I've been working on Coyote Valley and with the city since 1974, since they put IBM in on Bailey Avenue. So I know what's leading up to what's going to happen. And I've tried to get on the future committee that you're talking about, 24, where you want to try to do that. But the mayor's office hasn't responded to my wishes, nor has my district councilman.
Sir, I'm sorry. The time has expired, but I'd be happy to discuss this with you after the hearing.
We've sent two emails, two messages to your office.
Thank you, sir. Sir, I'm sorry. The time's expired for public comment. But again... But again, I'd be happy to talk to you. I'm sorry, sir. The time is limited. I'm sorry, sir. I'd be happy to discuss with you after the hearing.
Good afternoon, Brian Schmidt. I am here speaking in support of the staff recommendations and the recommendations from the mayor and city council members memo. Since 2003, I have been taking up the time of the city council to discuss Coyote Valley. And I'm just so glad we are at the stage that we are at right now, where we can get beyond much of the division and work constructively on an amazing conservation-oriented future for Coyote Valley. And I think what you are seeing right now is the success, along with so many other factors, of putting in a green infrastructure, natural capital infrastructure component to Measure T, to an infrastructure bond. And it is success not just in the implementation and outcome that we're, I think we'll have a vote on shortly, it was also part of the success of that bond itself, how it did so well with the voters, how you had environmental community out there working for the bond's success. A number of years ago, I had the chance to hear a lecture by former Energy Secretary Stephen Chu, who was the first science PhD to hold that position as Energy Secretary. And he said that when he left the position, he said to President Obama, "Do it again. Hire another science PhD," which he did. And so that is what I would like to recommend to you all, is you're going to have to come back sometime again for another infrastructure bond. I don't know when it'll be, but it will happen. Do it again. Put natural infrastructure in there again. Tell your other council members, tell supervisors, legislators, this is the way to succeed. This is the way to bring everyone together. And you're going to be seeing it within a couple of years in Coyote Valley, and every year moving on to that, when Councilmember Jones talked about 100 years from now, that's all going to be something that you're going to see as success. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Bill Rankin, David Puchel, James Eggers, and Carol Watts.
Thank you, Mayor Licardo and council. I'm Bill Rankin, president of Save Our Trails, a member of the Coyote Meadows Coalition, and a member of the Ridge Trail South Bay Trail Advocacy Group. I would like to read a letter on behalf of Liz Westbrook, the trail director of the Bay Area Ridge Trail Council. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, the Bay Area Ridge Trail Council requests the approval of the acquisition and master planning process in Coyote Valley. The proposed process would involve public input in the goals of protecting, restoring, and enhancing wildlife connectivity, floodplain restoration, public access, and regional trail connections. The eventual completion of the Ridge Trail connection between Santa Teresa Park to Coyote Creek Parkway will be another big step towards the eventual completion of the envisioned 550-mile continuous multi-use Bay Area Ridge Trail along Ridgeway lines, as well as the central Santa Clara County route through the heart of San Jose, along the Coyote and Penintencia Creek Trails, connecting the urban population to the vast protected open spaces nearby and beyond. When the gap between Santa Teresa County Park and Coyote Creek Parkway is completed, one will be able to get to the Coyote Creek Trail at Tully Road in San Jose and walk or bike continuously to the top of Mount Umenum along the completed Ridge Trail and continue to Lexington Reservoir. We appreciate the significant long-term effort and partnership put forth by the city, Peninsula Open Trust, and Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority to acquire and quickly open the property to docent-led public access. The docent-led outings will partially close this Ridge Trail gap. On behalf of the Ridge Trail supporters throughout the nine Bay Area counties, thank you for supporting the protection, restoration, and regional trail connections in Coyote Valley. Sincerely, Liz Westbrook. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks for your advocacy. Welcome, Dave.
Good afternoon, Dave Puchel. I've been a resident of San Jose for over 30 years. At the time I arrived, the effort to preserve open space in Coyote Valley was already underway. The county had created an open space task force, and their 1987 report listed Coyote Valley as second in priority only to the Baylands. Out of 61 areas that they studied, they recommended creation of an open space district. Activists lobbied through a Green Belt Coalition of organizations, including League of Women Voters, where my wife Liz Tam served as a representative. Councilmember Kamis's cousin, Fatty Sabah, also served on this committee. I also want to thank a few people I know of the many who helped, especially some of the founders of the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority, Virginia Holtz, John Fioreta, Garnett Annabelle, Kitty Monahan, Eric Carruthers, Vicki Moore, Diane McKenna, John Gibbs, Susie Wilson, Jerry Estrus, and Mike Honda. City councils have come and gone, but none were able to accomplish what you are about to do. So I want to thank each of you. Thank you, 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 thank you. We have many reasons to protect Coyote Valley. I hope we can study agricultural practices with a Silicon Valley spirit of innovation to come up with the breakthroughs in carbon sequestration, which can be deployed globally like our high-tech. And as you can see from the photo up here, maybe you can't see quite so good, we have tuli elk on Coyote Ridge above the valley. At the time of the gold rush, there were a half a million of these elk. By 1870, they were thought to be extinct. Fortunately, about a dozen were found hiding in the tuli's near Bakersfield. With care, they have come back. With a little more care, tuli elk can flourish in restored tuli wetlands down in the valley for generations to come. And to everyone here, thank you.
All right.
Good morning, mayor, city council members. My name is James Eggers. I'm proud to be a resident of District 3, Japantown, San Jose. And I'm very proud to be a resident of San Jose and to see what this city council has been doing. I want to thank the city council, support staff's recommendation, thank staff for their work, and the work of Open Space Authority and Post, and many others that have contributed. I'm also the executive director of the Sierra Club's Loma Prieta Chapter, which includes San Jose. We have 20,000 members and supporters in San Jose. And for many years, preservation, restoration of Coyote Valley has been one of our chapter's top conservation priorities. Want to thank you for this effort and say that I've been here, I immigrated from Texas four years ago. The first weekend that I was here, I went on a Sierra Club hike. Fortuitously, it was in Coyote Valley. Even more fortuitously, my guide was Dave Puchel. Yes. So since that day, I've been inspired by local activists and inspired by the beauty and the need to preserve Coyote Valley. So while I definitely thank all the council members, I remember just last month I was speaking with Anna Esu. She asked me how the four years had been since I moved from Texas. I said, "It's wonderful to have elected officials who care about the environment." And before the words got out of my mouth, she said, "It's because we've got constituents who care about the environment." And we've got constituents who care about the environment because of environmental organizations that educate and activate the local citizens. So I thank all of you, and from the grassroots, I thank all of those in the audience, all of those watching on television, all of those who are not here, some who have passed away that have spent literally combined 1,000 years working for the preservation of Coyote Valley, so that it'll be there for another 1,000 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Watts, and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of San Jose Santa Clara. We applaud the actions you're poised to take today, which show your dedicated commitment to the long-term health and sustainability of our city and of our region. The passage of this item will continue our city's commitment to alleviate the climate crisis and is consistent with the goals of Climate Smart San Jose. By preserving a large portion of Coyote Valley, you are addressing the needs for the capture and storage of storm waters, the reduction of flooding, essential wildlife corridors, and the preservation of open space, which will serve as a carbon sink for our region and can also be used for public enjoyment and for locally grown foods. Our league has been an advocate, often under the leadership of Virginia Holtz, for the preservation of Coyote Valley over the last 20 years. We have served on most general plan task forces, which included decisions on Coyote Valley. We've resisted sprawling development, supported the creation of the Green Belt between San Jose and Morgan Hill. We oppose any urban development in North Coyote Valley. Thanks to everyone involved, the property owners, Post, OSA, and the city, for this visionary action which supports the future of all people who live in our beautiful green and gold valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Kaufman, followed by Mary Patterson, Linda Ruthref, Shani Kleinhouse, and Susan Butler.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. On behalf of the entire environmental community, thank you for this historic decision. We hope that this will be a model for other municipalities and local governments to follow. Because as we prepare to address the impacts of climate change on our communities, one of our first priorities must be to preserve our open space and to concentrate new development within our already developed urban areas. This matters not only because we need the carbon absorbing potential of our open space, but also because continued sprawl development will increase greenhouse gas emissions. And that is why we need to make every effort to protect the remaining open space in our region, including the remaining open space in Coyote Valley. The city is about to embark on the general plan four-year review, which will address the future of north and mid Coyote Valley. We hope that this discussion will be undertaken with today's decision in mind, and that will continue the good work that's being started today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Welcome, Mary. No? Okay. Linda? Oh, there you are. Thank you.
I came in the side door, mayor. Greetings, city council members. My name is Mary Patterson. I'm a resident of District 2, a proud resident of the city of San Jose now for 20 years. Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, for your leadership, and to all of you city council members. I also currently serve as the president of the board of the Morgan Hill Unified School District, where I've served for three years. You all may know that the Coyote Valley is completely ensconced inside the district boundary for Morgan Hill Unified. Therefore, we have 9,000 kids and their families that live in and around the Coyote Valley. I am deeply thankful for your good work, as well as the good work of the Open Space Authority and Post, and the landowners that are present here today. I think on behalf of all of our schoolchildren and our families that are living in this area and being able to enjoy it on a daily basis, I want to thank you for the steps that you will take this afternoon. I believe that this is the kind of leadership that our kids look up to and need to see on a daily basis that you all are providing today. We look forward, as a school district, to working with the city of San Jose to make sure that our kids and our families can enjoy this kind of open space now and in the many, many, many years to come, and generations to come. We look forward also to working with the city of San Jose to preserve other open spaces and fields. And I'm happy to say that with the Parks Department, with the help of Councilmember Jimenez's office, we're also working to do some joint use so we can provide even more green space and natural space for our kids and families to recreate and enjoy themselves. So thank you so much for providing this opportunity to all of you seated here and behind me for representing the generations that we have to follow us.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Linda Ruthref. I'm a 40-year resident of San Jose. I'm also the volunteer chair of the Santa Clara Valley Chapter of the California Native Plant Society. There's been an endless barrage of bad news. The New York Times proclaims the insect apocalypse is here, insect populations are crashing worldwide, and everything up the food chain will feel the effects. Science Magazine reports that since 1970, North America has lost 2.9 billion birds. In less than a half a century, bird populations have dropped some 29%. There are reports of endless attacks on the Endangered Species Act and other environmental protections. So I am endlessly grateful to be living in a community that has learned to value the natural world. Our community understands that our quality of life and our ultimate fate is tied to how we treat the world around us. I am also grateful to be living in a community that has leaders like you that have the vision to protect Coyote Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo, council members. Shani Kleinhouse for Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Joan Howland, a legal historian, said, "Great events rarely occur without the fortuitous intersection of synergy and serendipity." I think that happened here, but there was a lot more. There is science, and I want to thank the Open Space Authority, and I want to thank the ANZA College, who we didn't mention, but they had a lot of the initial science on this. Obviously, advocacy and tenacity. This has been probably 30-odd years that Santa Clara Valley Audubon has engaged in this and to try to protect Coyote Valley. You need funding, obviously. Thank you to all of you for putting Measure T ahead and for the many voters who supported it and Post. And more than anything, it really needs the vision and the will to change things. And that is where I thank the mayor, Licardo, councillor member Jimenez, and all of you. I think this is something very, very exceptional, and you will be remembered for this for a long, long time. So we have a constellation of synergistic serendipitous and science, and everything came together. And just thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, welcome. Forgive me, I couldn't read the writing after Butler, so my apologies.
I'm a retired teacher. I should be ashamed of my handwriting. Butler Graham, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. As a mother, grandmother, and 26-year resident of San Jose, I thank you all for your vote on this land purchase and all of your hard work to prepare for it, and all the hard work of all the other organizations who've worked for this for many, many years. In this time of wildfires and other frightening climate change-related effects, I am so proud to live in a city that is actively planning for a sustainable future for our children and grandchildren. And I'm grateful to have a mayor and city council members and staff members of the city who listen to the concerns of the mothers, youth, and other members who have met with you, spoken up at council meetings, sent in postcards and emails. This is a great day. Our work is not done, however. Now we need to work to preserve the rest of Coyote Valley in perpetuity. These acres of land and agriculture, of open space and agriculture are critical because they absorb floodwaters of Coyote Creek. But even more importantly, they're a carbon sink. They absorb carbon out of the atmosphere. So to be climate smart, we need, yes, to do everything we possibly can to decrease carbon in the atmosphere. We need to change how we source our energy and our food, but we also need to preserve lands that serve to absorb carbon out of the atmosphere. And our children and grandchildren and many other generations will thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew Boone, followed by Kyumi Honda Yamamoto, and Linda Hutchins Knowles. Those are all of our speakers. If you'd like to speak, please submit a card.
Thank you very much. My name is Andrew Boone. I am a candidate for this city council, San Jose City Council, District 6. I live in Meridian Avenue in West San Carlos. I agree with the speakers who have spoken before that this is a great step forward to preserve natural habitat, to preserve the ability to protect our own selves from flooding. But I want to point out that this is a decision you really shouldn't have had to make, since no one should have approved plan- no one should have approved planning to pave over a giant piece of Coyote Valley with parking lots and warehouses in the first place. All you're doing really is correcting a mistake. That was a very obvious mistake that many environmental groups and thousands of residents have had to battle this City Council to fix. So, thank you for finally, when we're nearing the end of 2019, doing the right thing that should have been done decades ago. Also, I want to point out that there still remain several things to be done, important actions to truly preserve Coyote Valley for wildlife that haven't been part of this discussion. For example, a major road, Santa Teresa Boulevard, cuts right through the two properties that you're purchasing, and there's a large median between the lanes. So, this is a barrier for wildlife to cross. This makes it not so much of an open space when you have what's, you know, in practice, a highway running right through it. So, what you definitely shouldn't do, and this is what you, the San Jose City Council, are planning to do, is widen the part of Santa Teresa Boulevard from two lanes south of Bailey Avenue to four lanes. There's a segment of Santa Teresa Boulevard hail that you have in your plans to widen inside of this area that you're saying you're protecting for wildlife. So, that's a step that needs to be fixed. That project needs to be canceled, and Santa Teresa, the part that's four lanes, should be reduced to two lanes and not have a large median in the middle of it. If you really believe in protecting wildlife, you would create open space.
Thank you, Ms. Bren. Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Kyomi Honda Yamamoto, and I'm delighted to be here today as a fourth-generation San Josean and to represent Green Belt Alliance, one of the advocacy groups that for years have supported the protection of Coyote Valley and today support the recommendation before you. I know you're well-versed in the environmental value of Coyote Valley, but this issue is very personal to me. During the big storm of 2017 at about midnight, my husband and I received alerts that the stretch of Coyote Creek behind our house was threatening our neighborhood. We were expecting our first child, and we were alarmed. Luckily, we were spared, but others was not, and I was concerned about the next time. Your vote today would help to protect the natural infrastructure of Coyote Valley, making it less likely for there to be a next time for that community. I now live in South San Jose, less than four miles from the area that you are protecting, and I'm excited that my daughter could now watch me go to work in our urban downtown and visit Coyote Valley to enjoy the natural open space that will remain in her backyard. I'm proud because that is how smart cities are designed, and we live in one. The opportunity for protection is here only because the people in San Jose and the heart of Silicon Valley took a stand against climate change and sprawl to protect this irreplaceable natural resource. While our environmental work is still not done, we celebrate this major milestone with you, and I thank you for your display of leadership and for setting the bar higher for the generations to come.
Thank you. And finally, welcome, Linda.
Good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo, Councilmembers. I'm here to thank you so much for your bold climate action that you took today. And to put it in context, that this is the fourth major climate action you've taken in three months. In September, you declared a climate emergency, and you passed an ambitious reach code. In October, you passed a gas ban for most types of new construction. And today, you're protecting over 900 acres of vital open space land. To make it clear the climate implications of this, this land is invaluable for drawing down carbon from the atmosphere. It's not enough to stop putting carbon up. We have to start drawing it down. So, this land, as this photo shows, all of that green space is absorbing carbon. And also, as was pointed out, the climate resilience. We did door knocking in District Three, and we were, the members there, we broke door knocking in English and Spanish, and they were so grateful to have a chance to sign these postcards. I'm here today to deliver our last batch, but this is a climate equity, a climate resilience, a climate mitigation action, as well as a conservation, and we're so grateful. So, you already received 438. I'm proud to say that today we have 109 more in Spanish, English, and Vietnamese, as well as online. So, you'll each get your little packet. I'll give it to the clerk. The moms and the kids are really grateful. Our children are especially excited. They love animals, and so just to see those beautiful animals, the kids are so excited to get to enjoy this. As someone pointed out in the press conference, generations of children will be able to enjoy this open space and have a safer climate because of your bold action. And so, we're grateful to Megan Fluke and Committee for Green Foothills for inviting us to join this campaign. We kind of joined in late, but we threw ourselves into it with all we could, and we're grateful for her and for all of the other advocates and for the staff and for all of you. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Linda. Thanks to all the members of the community who came out to speak and those who chose not to but just wanted to join in to see how we would move forward. And among those, I just want to recognize the former council member and supervisor, Ken Jaeger, who's been a environmental champion for a long time here in the county. Thank you, Ken. Okay, back to the council. Councilmember Foley?
Didn't think I'd be first. What a tremendously exciting day, starting with the press conference and then and now the opportunity to take action on what is before us, to complete, to approve and complete the sale of the transfer of these properties that will then begin the preservation of this open space. This is just a landmark day. I'm so proud to be part of this council and to be have been part of the discussions since I started. In January, as a new council member, I didn't know Coyote Valley was coming before us. I knew it would eventually, but I didn't know it was coming so quickly. And in closed session, we had many discussions over the details of the contract working out, all of the specifics of the land, the any environmental issues, any anything that we needed to discuss. And so, finally, here we are with the final agreements that we hope to all execute to, well, sign. I'm not executing it. I'd love to sign it, though. That would be so much fun. I am grateful for conversations that I've had with the very, with the many environmental groups who reached out to me to really educate me on the issue and the beauty of Coyote Valley. But truly, I was already sold on the beauty of Coyote Valley. I lived in San Martin for a long time, and I worked at a farm off McKean Road. And every day, I would actually drive up past the Coyote Valley to get to my place of business at that time, and I enjoyed the splendor and beauty of the open space. It is wonderful that we today will be able to preserve that open space for our children, our children's children, and our children's children's children, if we can think that far in in advance, and really return to the days of valleys, valley of hearts delight, when this area was known for its produce, its fruits, and and someday continue maybe to farm some of that area too, and in a way to educate our kids too on how important that piece of land is. I am so honored to be here. Councilmember Jimenez, I'm going to steal your thunder, and I'm going to move that we approve the recommendation for staff.
Councilmember Jimenez is in your district? Please.
Yeah. Thank you. So, there's a lot to say. I'm going to try to move through this fairly quickly. I just want to, you know, to Councilmember Foley's point is that she became familiar and maybe appreciated Coyote Valley when she worked in San Martin. I can tell you that my my appreciation of Coyote Valley stemmed from something a little different. I've shared this, some of you have heard this, but I don't share this often, but I grew up in an affordable housing complex, and I've often shared that my open space was my concrete patio, and there really didn't exist a lot of green space. And so, we were the type of families, like many families still in San Jose, that never ventured out to Yosemite, maybe ventured out sometimes to Alum Rock Park, but didn't really appreciate the open space, the environment. And it was it was something that was seemed very much out of reach. And so, that is what prompted me to initially get involved in environmental issues. And quite frankly, it started back in 2013, 2014, when I joined the campaign for Measure Q, just as a volunteer, calling folks through the endorsement committee, trying to talk into media, and learning more about Coyote Valley. And that, you know, and I'm a little embarrassed to admit that having lived in South San Jose for some time, you always saw that valley open, and you had a sense that something might happen there one day, but you never, I never quite truly understood the value of it and the beauty of it until I began getting more engaged. And and through the Open Space Authority's work, that's when I really got that appreciation. So, I just wanted to express that, that some of us approach this from a lot of different ways, and I think that's sort of the beauty in preserving this, is that I think there are still many, many more families, children, that quite frankly, don't get to experience the open space and nature in its truest sense at all. And so, to the extent in the future this helps to provide some families that, I think it's vitally important. The other thing I wanted to touch on, and a lot of folks have mentioned it, but it's the fact that it does truly take a village, right? We can go on listing, I think, hundreds of people. We're so critical in getting this getting this passed. So, I just want to thank a few people, certainly all the tireless environmental partners. There's too many of you to list. You know who you are. The Brandonberg family, we really appreciate you coming to the table and being a willing partner. Sobrato family, and of course, the hard-working staff. Nancy, I know you you've you and other folks have come to us in closed session on many occasions, trying to wrap our head around everything that you talked about earlier. There's a lot of issues, and so I very much appreciate your work and your sincere approach in trying to make this happen, and even when sometimes we kept pushing and asking questions and expressing how important this was. So, I thank you so much for your patience, because I knew I could nagged you a few times. The other group of folks I wanted to thank is are the my colleagues here in the City Council. Obviously, this doesn't take place if all of you aren't supportive and on board. And I know, obviously, we've had conversations in closed session, and I suspect that this this is going to pass, it is going to get approved. But I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation and, Mayor, for your leadership in moving this along. I think that was certainly vital for Measure T and, of course, getting us this far. And so, I just wanted to say thank you so much. To the owners of many of the properties in Coyote Valley, I know, obviously, many of them aren't here, but, you know, I've always felt and continue to feel, and that was, this feeling has been solidified in a discussion with Mr. Sasso, is that the landowners in Coyote Valley, it seems to me, simply desire to be heard and treated with respect and treated fairly, and want to be seen as partners, not adversaries. And I think Mr. Barron sort of touched on that, is that there was a partnership going through this. And I think that's very important in everything the city does. And that was very evident to me, Mr. Sasso. I know you didn't, you wanted more time up here, but when you, when we went on that ride-along and you were showing me the properties and telling me your story, I could sense the sincerity coming from your experience, wanting to be heard, wanting to be respected. And I very much appreciate that, and I I don't think this is the end of the conversation. I think this getting this approved today is really going to be an opening to have additional conversations. And Mr. Sasso, specifically you, I want you and your wife to know that I'm open and willing and actually want to continue to have conversations with you about the future of the space, and don't want you to think that this is essentially the door that's going to be closed. And so, I just wanted to relay that, because I think sometimes that gets lost in a lot of the things we're trying to do. The other thing I wanted to touch on is the residents. I don't know, I know there are a few residents here, but, you know, the issue of Coyote Valley has always been present in a lot of the conversations amongst the residents of South San Jose, but I have to tell you, it's always seemed like a distant possibility. But I can tell you that today, after the press conference, there were some residents that live right on the other side of Tulare Hill, or literally neighbors to Coyote Valley, expressed to me that the that the event, what's happening today, is surreal. It was a gentleman, I suspect he's probably in his late or mid 70s, and he expressed he was happy beyond words and very moved that this was moving forward. And so, I think the residents are very happy. I can tell you, since I took office, we've been doing, we've had we've had some hikes that have taken place in Coyote Valley, certainly with some of the partners out there. And I think over the last few years, the understanding of Coyote Valley has grown amongst the residents. Their love for the valley has grown, and their appreciation of the valley really has blossomed. And I think, as other residents expressed to me after the press conference, and I think I shared with you, Andrea, is that they're they're ready to get engaged. They want to be involved, and they want to have a seat at the table as some of the discussions move forward as to how that valley floor is going to be used. And so, you should know that there's another sentence here, I was going to make the motions, but since Councilmember Foley stole my thunder, I'm going to leave that out. But I just want to say thank you for everything. And there's a lot of work ahead, but I feel confident that together, as we've moved this along, we're going to be able to accomplish it all. Thank you.
And if it's any consolation, I'll note for the record, Councilwoman Jimenez, that you were pushing for this well before this ever got to Measure T or anything else. I know that you've been an advocate for making this happen for a long time. So, thank you for that. Councilmember Camus?
Thank you, and I also want to thank especially our staff. Nancy was juggling Google while doing this at the same time, and I really appreciate all your work on the staff. And I want to give a shout-out to Dave Pochell. He doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't just talk the talk. He walks the walk. He's out there literally giving guided tours on on the flowers and the hills, and I really appreciate his time and effort to educate me about the valley floor and and the several tours that I've been on with with Post and the Open Space Authority. So, thank you for your efforts to to bring me along to this vision, and I appreciate the work on that. Many of you may know that I'm not a fan of new taxes, and I have not championed too many, but Measure T did have accountability. It did have measures in there that I supported. Not only did it have this, which I'm very proud of, but it also had 300 million to pave our streets and put more police officers and firefighters on the online. And you don't get, as a council member, you don't necessarily see new taxes turn into actual actionable, you know, viewable things, right? You don't, you don't get to see the product of your work in a timely manner. Most of the stuff that I've worked on in preserving park space and hopefully the Santa Teresa foothills or what have you, I probably will never see and until I'm way out of office. And so, to have something cross the finish line so quickly is astounding to me, and I think that it's great. We're not only just getting, we're not just getting pavement maintenance, we're not just getting more police and firefighter facilities, and we're getting, we're preserving this land for our generations to come. I really, I know it took a Herculean effort to bring this across the finish line and so quickly, I might add. I've been delighted to support this effort, and I will be supporting the vote today.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Jimenez?
Thank you. I want to thank all of the advocates and residents and, of course, staff. Nancy, you've led us in a in a tough negotiation, and we're so proud where we are right now. And Andrea and Walter, thank you so much. And I'm going to thank you on behalf of my daughter. A couple of weeks ago, my daughter, my son, when I was dropping off my kids to school, and we were passing Thompson Creek over in District Eight, and we saw a coyote along Thompson Creek. So, you don't have to go, you don't have to go to the Coyote Valley to actually see coyotes. And that's because we're protecting this land, right? And this, and the biodiversity through this connectivity, right? And somebody used a phrase, I think it was the Central Wildlife Corridor. And I thought, of course, we're supporting this, and why wouldn't we? In the same way that we are trying to make sure that we have transit-friendly corridors for our residents, you know, to get them out of their cars, for to protect our environment for so many different reasons, and that we should do this also, and that should translate over into our environment as well. And so, I see the benefits of the work that you've done for the, you know, more than 30 years, I'm sure that this has been going on. I've been, my family's enjoying some of those benefits and seeing some of that wildlife in our own backyard, and so I thank you. I haven't seen the wild turkeys lately, but around this time, they come out of the hillsides and come down. I don't know why. They shouldn't come down during November, should not, but that's when I typically see them out in in Evergreen area. So, I, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I hope that my children will continue to show their children some of the the beauty of what's in our own backyard, and thank you for for being those. what's in our own backyard, and thank you for being those advocates and for making sure that you conserve this for us. I also wanted to thank, and I wanted to take the opportunity, I know this is all about Coyote Valley, but there's some advocates here in the room who also helped my district when we were fighting some developers against our open space, and I think David Pichel is here, Megan, Shawnee, Brian, and if I'm missing anybody, thank you so much also for spearheading some of the great efforts and bringing in all of the environmentalists into Measure B and Measure C, Alice. So thank you so much. You know, you've made time to make sure that my district was also protected, and took time to speak to our residents about the importance of conserving open space, and so, your advocacy is vast, and so I thank you. I thank you for having that passion for our environment.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
I just want to add my thanks to Post, OSA, and city staff, Nancy especially, and to everyone who came out today. This is a historic day, and I think that's why probably every single one of us is going to speak. We don't get a chance to, as Councilmember Camas said, we don't get a chance to do something this big every day, and these dollars from Measure T are multipurpose dollars. So we get flood control, we get a wildlife corridor, we get a carbon sink, but one of the things that we don't usually get to use taxpayer dollars for is to actually benefit all the taxpayers' health. And we get the beauty and the nature, which is really something that we all need to protect our health and to really thrive. I've been on both sides of the valley, I've been on the ranges on each side of the valley, and it is just gorgeous down there, and it's 15 minutes from downtown, maybe 20, on a rougher traffic day, and that's how close we are to this wonderful nature that can calm and soothe us and really help heal us, and I just, I think it's such a fantastic thing that we're doing today, so I'm excited that we're going to vote on this soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Crasco.
Well, thank you, and in the interest of time, I'll just say ditto to all of the thank-yous. A lot of folks have been working on this far longer than we have, we just get the benefit of being named the council that gets to vote on this. And a speaker said, you know, we're righting a wrong, in his opinion. I don't think we're righting a wrong, I think the timing is different, and so, the council that made decisions back then saw different opportunities. Today, we see that this is something that needs to be done for the benefit of the entire region, especially for our area. As Linda mentioned, you know, we're, in short, cleansing our lungs of the damaging environment that we ourselves have created. So now, we're going to make sure that not only do we get the benefits, but our children get the benefits, and their children get the benefits, and so we're making sure that we're taking care of the next generations. I did want to say a couple of things. As I look at the images right now, I was Googling Coyote Valley, just because I love, I'm very visual, I love to see the pictures, and of course, the presentation that you put together, Nancy, of these beautiful pictures hooked me, and so now I want to see all the other images that are in there. And when you look at this, it goes without saying, such a worthy cause, such a worthwhile effort, and I want to thank all of you who have really been in the fight and never gave up, and made sure that all of the elements and timing came together, but you pushed it until all of it came together. You created the environment for it to be the right timing, and sometimes that's what happens, and so we're here today, you created history, we get to participate in it, so I'm grateful for that. I do want to, as I'm looking at the images, I do want to reflect a moment. I represent District 5, which is east of 101. It's a very impoverished district to some extent. It's still very diverse, but it is very impoverished. We have a lot of challenges, and for all of you who have been advocating for the preservation of our environment and to go against a lot of the beliefs of our current administration in the White House, who's, you know, of course, we know what we're doing in terms of the Paris Agreement, and what science is telling us, you know that some of the most impacted and afflicted communities are those that are most challenged, some of the most vulnerable communities, my community. We sit under the Reed Hillview Airport, and we're starting to challenge that as well, because the environmental movement becomes a social justice movement, and so we have to address those. And someone spoke about the flood, and so for me, besides preserving the beauty, having a place to go meditate, having a place to go rejuvenate, and just reflect on the beauty of Mother Earth, this also becomes a social justice issue for me, because when the flood took place, a speaker came and spoke on how she was expecting her first baby. I had the fortune, if you will, of holding a newborn baby, just not more than 24 hours after the flood hit. My staff, even though that was in my district, was among the first few folks that were on site, trying to figure out how to help. And my district was home to one of the larger Red Cross shelters at James Lick High School, so we were all hands on deck, and everything else that we were taking care of came to a screeching halt as we were helping folks who had lost everything because of that flood. And so, for me, this represents an effort to making sure that the most vulnerable among us are safeguarded and have some sort of guarantee that we will take care of them as we are taking care of our natural resources as well. And I hope that that is the case, that we will make sure that those individuals will not have to face again a natural disaster, won't have to face devastating losses, won't be displaced from their homes, won't have to take their children out of the neighborhoods that they love, or the schools where they've come to love their friends, or, God forbid, that they face loss of life. So I'm very happy to be here today with all of you, as I look at these images, but I'm very comforted by knowing that, besides all of the benefits that preserving the Coyote Valley will bring to our entire region, that we're also looking after our most vulnerable in so many, many ways. And so I just wanted you to also know that that's also what you've done. You've made sure to take care of and protect and safeguard the lives of many, many other people in a very, very concrete way, and so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparsen.
Yes, I just wanted to thank OSA and Post and the city staff, and all of the partners that have been working on this with the landowners and the community. This is huge, and it is an historic vote, that's why we're all going on, but it is, this is huge for the community, and I served on the Guadalupe Coyote Resource Conservation Board, and which really gave me an appreciation for the wildlife, the land, but also the people. I'd like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Jimenez, for his leadership on this, but also for his comments about how there are families in San Jose that, you know, they can't afford or even think of going to Yosemite, right? Coyote Valley's their Yosemite, and there are communities in San Jose that don't have a lot of open space, and this is going to be open space for all of San Jose, so thank you.
Councilmember Peralas.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm just going to get on the echo train here, and in fact, noticed that my comments earlier from the press conference have already made the news, so I'll keep it super brief. So, well, not necessarily just mine, the entire press conference. I didn't actually read it yet, so I... I've said enough. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your work on this, specifically staff, but all of our community members, we've heard it time and again, this took, an entire village, it took decades of work, so I'm excited, I'll be speaking the rest with my vote. Thanks.
Councilmember Yip.
Yes, thank you. Not much as a thanks, staff, I want to congratulate all of you on your hard-won efforts, or soon-to-be hard-won efforts, over many years advocating for this, and I think it's a testament to the hard work of your organizations and discussions with many councilmembers over many years. I think that's the point, the takeaway from this, always keep on at it and fight for what you believe is right. But I also want to ask you for your help. As we accomplish something and bring something to an end today, I just want to take a moment to say that there will be more issues and fights ahead that we need your help with, or I would need your help with. And as you well know, our general plan has Coyote Valley zoned for 35,000 jobs, and from my perspective, as we protect this space, there will have new discussions moving forward about what to do with those 35,000 jobs, where do we move them? Because as I keep saying, we do have a jobs-housing imbalance in San Jose, and the only way to right our finances and to be sustainable as a city is to pull more jobs into San Jose. So whether those jobs go downtown, or north San Jose, or other parts, Evergreen and such in our city, we will be facing pushback from those communities as well, in terms of densification, in terms of growing up and not growing out, all of that. So I just ask you to stand with us as we prepare and have those future conflicts, because I know they're going to come, and we need to resolve that. It can't just be, we're preserving Coyote Valley and forget about what do we do with the jobs that are zoned for there. We need to account for that, and that's going to be an uphill climb. So congratulations, let's celebrate today, there's more work to be done ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Yip, it is true, we are just at the end of the beginning, and we know there's more of Coyote Valley, and I appreciate Mr. Sasso's comments, obviously, there's other land there, and I expect we'll continue to work collaboratively with landowners. I know there are other players here that have expressed interest, like the county and the state, in pushing forward with our efforts, and I'm just glad that we were able to get this very important, strategic and critical piece of Coyote Valley preserved, and we'll continue to move forward. All right. Yes, Rick? You know what? That's a good question. Rick just asked if the motion was a staff recommendation or our memo, and the memo?
I was going to ask the same question.
Sorry, memo.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for asking.
Okay, is that right with the seconder? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, yeah, and I want to thank Scott Green for his work on that memo, along with Mackenzie Mossing and all the other folks who've been, all my colleagues certainly, who provided input on that. All right, well, here we go, let's vote.
I don't have anything for you to vote on, so just verbal.
Oh, verbal? Okay, we're going to do this verbally. I know that people have been patiently waiting in this meat locker of City Hall, and I want to say thank you all for shivering through this experience.
Can we take the air conditioner to 184?
Okay, so we'll do this the old-fashioned way, since apparently the digital method is not being utilized at this moment?
Right.
Okay, unless you need a roll call?
Just no.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. That might be the last time we ever hear applause in this chambers. So thank you for that. Maybe we should do this again next week. We do have two members of the committee who'd like to speak on open forum, Roland, followed by Andrew Boone. Since we do have a bit more of the proceeding remaining, I'd appreciate if folks could exit quietly and perhaps engage in celebratory high-fives outside the chambers. We can hear you fine, Roland.
Okay, so what I'd like to do briefly is to talk about occasional unfortunate consequences of us doing something good, and I can go... Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I can go straight back.
I'm sorry, we have public comment right now. If folks could quietly exit, we would really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. LeBrun.
So I will go straight back to the history of the Fisher parcels, and I mentioned this parcel that used to belong to a guerilla farmer, eventually got sold to Panatoni, and then they bought the adjacent parcel, and that's how we ended up with 30 acres, and then we had this 400,000-square-foot distribution center, and, I mean, everybody just went ballistic, and eventually, this is what led to Post purchasing the parcels. This is what they do, and you know I supported them. But now, let's go and think about what happened. We had an opportunity there, because we had the distribution center that was directly adjacent to railroad tracks, so the opportunity that potentially we had is that the freight or whatever it is would be coming into the distribution center by rail, and then distributed by smaller, you know, vans or whatever to their final destinations. So we killed that. But what most of you probably don't know is what's going on in Morgan Hill right now. It's called the Morgan Hill Technology Park. It's grown from 30 acres to 89, and we're talking about not 300,000, we're talking about 700,000 square feet for a distribution center. But the problem now is that distribution center is not adjacent to the tracks, it's near Cochrane, but it's on the east side, it's on the other side of 101. They've got 367 bays for the semis, and the discussion now is adding lanes to 101, and actually having dedicated lanes just for freight, so that people can come to work in the morning. And then to the point that somebody brought up here, where are we going to put the jobs? We cannot put any more jobs in the north with the housing in the south. This is what is causing this catastrophe every morning on Highway 101, Highway 85, and Highway 87. We need to figure out to have some jobs in the south. So I thought of bringing it up out there, but let's think, you know, bigger picture than just one project at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. Welcome.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Andrew Boone, and I'd like to comment on a previous item I was not able to do to work, your declaration of a climate change emergency. Absolutely, that is a critical action to take, even though your declaration is simply a declaration itself. your declaration is simply a declaration in itself, doesn't reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But the acknowledgement that it is an emergency is important. I had advocated for that previously. We, as species humans, people, we did not know how rapidly the changes due to climate change are coming. It just turned out that 10 years ago, 20 years ago, the predictions that scientists were making were incorrect. And now the changes are coming decades or centuries sooner than we thought. And on top of that, we have a federal administration of this country that doesn't care that this is happening, and is worsening the situation. And it isn't only this nation. The federal administration, the new federal administration in Brazil has the same attitude. And that country, being home to the largest rainforest on the planet, is very alarming. So that means the city of San Jose has to react as if these things are really happening, as if climate change truly is going to destroy this world and its ability to support life. You have to believe that and respond accordingly. This means not saying that we're going to preserve the current transportation system heavily based on automobiles indefinitely into the future, and plan on widening our highways for even more car traffic. It isn't enough for everyone to just drive electric cars. We need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, all of our, everything we do that produces emissions, to a negligible level as soon as possible. And this means, at a bare minimum, just cancel the highway expansion projects. Just don't do something that's very expensive anyway, and has huge negative impacts on the community in terms of air pollution and spending large amount of taxpayer dollars. You can make great decision at the same time, take what really needs to be the most important action to address catastrophic climate change in San Jose, and that's reduce.
Thank you, Mr. Lebrun. Thank you. The meeting's adjourned.